... meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, April 15th, 2021. My name is Alyssa Olson and I am the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot 021, due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll to verify a quorum.
Commissioner Baxley.
Here.
Commissioner Caprini. Thank you, Commissioner Baxley. Commissioner Ismiley.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Marwa.
Here.
Commissioner McGuire.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweetsie.
Here.
That's seven members present.
All right, we have a quorum. So next, we'll proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs dot minneapolis mn dot gov. Commissioners, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Ford.
I move we adopt the agenda.
Commissioner Ismiley.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Ismiley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweetsie.
Aye.
That's seven yays.
All right, that motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 25th, 2021. Commissioners, can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Ismiley.
I move to accept the minutes of March 25th, Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner McGuire.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley. I'm, oh.
Whoops, aye, sorry about that.
We've all done it. Is that a yae, Mr. Baxley?
That's a aye, aye, yes, there we go.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ismiley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweetsie.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Wonderful, that's seven yays, thank you.
All right, up next is our one item for tonight. It's item number four and it's 2609 Blaisdell Avenue and staff is Andrew Friends.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today for your preliminary feedback is a proposed project at 2609 Blaisdell Avenue. This project is a planned unit development incorporating an existing two-story building with 45 dwelling units and a proposed three-story building with 40 dwelling units. All units in the proposed project are planned to be affordable at 50% AMI. The project site is located at the intersection of Blaisdell Avenue and 26th Street. The existing building on the site is the former Whittier Elementary School, which is now converted to residential uses with 45 units. Also present on the site is a significant-sized surface parking lot with 44 spaces, a playground structure, and a large unstriped paved area located at the southern portion of the site. The existing zoning of the site is R5. The property is located in the Interior 3 Built Form Overlay District and the future land use here is urban neighborhood. The applicant can speak more thoroughly to the design of the project, but just as an overview, the proposed new building would be located on the southern portion of the site, largely replacing that unpaved, I'm sorry, unstriped paved area and would include one level of underground parking, access off of the alley, shared amenity spaces for both buildings at the first level and 40 dwelling units on floors 1 through 3. The two buildings would be connected by a hallway link at the basement level. That link would project slightly above grade, but for the purposes of the zoning code, these will be treated as two separate principal structures. The proposed project, the exterior materials are proposed to be brick and metal panel. As proposed, the project would be in compliance with the city's guidelines for exterior materials. As part of the project, a variety of other site improvements are proposed, including a new large playground structure at the interior of the site, raised garden beds for residents, significant landscaping improvements, and multiple outdoor seating areas. Based on the preliminary plans that have been submitted, staff anticipates that the following applications would be needed. The main application here would be a conditionally used permit for a planned unit development. As part of that, they would be seeking PUD alternatives to allow multiple principal structures, multiple principal residential structures on a single zoning lot to increase the maximum gross floor area of individual structures in a PUD in the Interior 3 and to reduce the front yard setback from the district minimum, which is 15 feet, to 13.7 feet. The project would also require a site plan review and a preliminary and final plat. Along with any other feedback that Commissioners have, staff is especially interested in the Commission's feedback on the proposed PUD alternatives and amenities for the project. In particular, I think the item that staff is most interested and would really like some guidance from the Commission on is the requested alternative to increase gross floor area for individual structures in this PUD. This is a new provision that many of you may recall was just added this past January as part of the Built Form Overlay District's text amendment. And this project would be the first to seek an alternative to that provision. And it would be a relatively significant departure from the applicable regulation. So the regular maximum gross floor area for an individual structure in a planned unit development in the Interior 3 Built Form Overlay District is 25,200 square feet. The existing building here is a little over 42,000 square feet and the proposed building is a little over 48,000 square feet. The new ordinance lays out that when the Commission is considering this alternative, the Planning Commission must consider whether the development's layout, amenities, and building scale are consistent with the intent of the built form policies of the comprehensive plan. So that's the item that I think we're most interested in feedback on and of course, we welcome any other feedback that Commissioners might have. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the information I covered. Otherwise, I believe the applicant team would like to present as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you, I just want a quick clarification on the floor area ratio requirement. Would this still need a deviation if these two buildings were on separate lots so a PUD wouldn't be required if there was a lot line down the middle instead of the connection point?
Yeah, that's a great question. This is the provision here that they would be seeking an alternative to is not to the floor area ratio, it's just to the gross floor area. So with the new Built Form Overlay Districts, there are new requirements in the ordinance that apply for maximum lot size that apply to projects other than planned unit developments and cluster developments. And those maximum lot sized regulations are intended to kind of preserve the existing rhythm and scale of the Built Form Overlay District so that we're not just regulating the height of a building and its bulk relative to its site, but also looking at the overall bulk of the building. So I think a lot of us can picture some of the 1960s-era apartment buildings that are, you know, two and a half stories and can often be a half a block long or, you know, two-thirds of a block long. And so that maximum lot size regulation was kind of intended to prevent that sort of outcome and to promote buildings that are more in scale with the existing character of these neighborhood interiors. Planned unit developments by their very nature are on larger sites, right? And so those maximum lot area requirements don't apply to planned unit developments. Instead, the ordinance puts in limitations on the maximum gross floor area of structures to try and have a similar impact to that maximum lot size. To your question about the link, from the zoning code, we are treating these as two fully separate buildings. So with or without the link, with or without a property line included as part of the planned unit development, that wouldn't change the needed request to increase the maximum gross floor area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing other questions right now, so if the applicant could introduce themselves and introduce their project.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Kim Breatham, architect, and Leah Stockstrom from Common Bond is our client. Leah, would you like to start?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone, hi Commissioners, my name is Leah Stockstrom, I'm a Senior Project Manager with Common Bond Communities. So we actually currently own and operate Whittier Community Housing, which is the converted school building. We bought it in 2010 from the Whittier Co-op. And at that time, did a very light-touch rehab on that building. So now we're excited to be able to go back in and actually do a more complete rehab, including adding some sprinkler systems to the existing building and have the opportunity to build out the parking lot with more affordable housing units. So that's what we're bringing before you today. All of the units will be 50% AMI or less. And actually, the existing building has a HAP contract on it, which means it's 100% voucher property. And Minneapolis Public Housing Authority actually gave us a full contract for the new building as well. So these will be really deeply affordable units, which means residents will only pay 30% of their income to live here. So we're really excited about this opportunity and I'll turn it over to Kim and Bill to talk more about the architectural details.
Thanks, Leah. So I thought I'd just add on to what staff has already indicated about the definition of the basic project. We began looking at how to build on the south parking paved area a couple of years ago and have looked at a few different massing situations to get to a building program that helps from a numbers perspective and operational perspective the project work. And approximately a year ago, in engaging with staff, we discovered the upcoming, now in place, overlay zoning. And we needed to decide whether or not some of the other scenarios we'd looked at, such as being a four-story building or a five-story building and how much parking and so forth, we would do versus a conforming plan closer to what the overlay was anticipating being put in place by the year end. And so we chose to do that, to do a plan that was closer to conforming in terms of building height, because building height was the most critical decision at the time that we needed to make. But that we could do a massing of a building to create 40 new units with approximately one-to-one parking enclosed that respected the setback along Blaisdell and the open space between the existing building and the street. And so that's what we believe are presenting. I'd like to add on to the staff's explanation related to the massing and the request for an increased floor footprint area. What makes, I think, this site a bit different is that the overlay zoning anticipates smaller lots and smaller buildings in order to be a fabric along some of these streets in, for instance, Whittier. And in this case, it's a very large lot and a very large existing building. And we're trying to be sensitive to the issue, the goal of the scale of the building oriented towards Blaisdell that respects what the overlay anticipates, which is a smaller footprint on a smaller lot. At the same time, we're trying to give relief between the new building and the existing building and respect some of the massing on that southwest building, create some open space around the southwest building corner of the existing building. And take advantage of creating a new public entry space into the new building that also enhances the existing connection between the existing and new building, but also adds some more entry amenity space to the existing building and at the rear of the building for child play space. So we've tried to create a massing that respects the avenue, is sympathetic to the width of the end buildings, matches the height of the existing building, the typical parapet height, and repeats some of the coloration without doing it in a terribly historic, neohistoric manner. So we think it's appropriate to have contrasting materials, in this case, metal, with some brick that repeats some of the color of the existing building. We are creating an entrance feature up to the existing building. And if I share my screen, just so it might be easier if I can. If we look at the site plan, from the street going up to the new first floor level, we need to get an accessible route. So this winding element is actually an accessible route to get up to the first floor that is a little less than six feet above, so it can be defined as the first floor area. And it gets to a point where the floor lines of the main level of this building and the first floor of this are relatively level. And the roof of this then two-story building is about the same as the roof of this three-story building. So this is a public entry patio gathering space on the Blaisdell frontage and a child space that's on the alley frontage. One issue related to the floor elevations I just pointed out is there's no storm sewer in Blaisdell. So as a part of this project, we will have to make connection to an existing storm sewer that happens in 27th, which partly then dictates what this floor level has to be in order to get storm drainage out of this parking ramp out and down to the street. So the heights of the building work both in terms of a public storm sewer connection reason, but also to get the buildings to relate to one another in a vertical plane. If I just skip to the elevations again, that's then why these heights are relatively comparable and the floor lines are relatively comparable. And that gives us a height of a building that conforms with the overlay requirements. So the various elevations, the backyard patio area, we want to have secure for kids. And then if I go back to the front courtyard, we are creating elements in terms of garden plots for residents, landscape sitting areas, and to make a good frontage along Blaisdell as people drive south. I think those are what I primarily wanted to highlight and so I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Ismiley.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Well, I guess I'll just first say, kind of unrelated to the feedback that is being requested, when I was reading the project proposal with, before getting to the map, I was, I thought that the conversation was about the parking lot that is on 26th. And then was, to be honest, a little disappointed that that wasn't the lot that was going, but it was further down Blaisdell because, you know, the other one is more in the, I don't know, trying to get away from parking spaces that are in very prominent locations. I thought that would have been great if that parking lot was going. But I guess my question for you is that based on the staff's analysis of the difference between what kind of gross floor area is allowed in this overlay district and what the gross floor area is currently, do you see any kind of mitigation to the plans for this structure? Or is this seem to be the only way, in your opinion, to move forward? And then my other question is that, I think Leah mentioned some updates to the exterior amenities of the other building, including sprinkler and landscape area and things like that. Is there also any kind of additional rehab or amenities that will be a part of this project but inside the other building? I have never been inside the building, so I don't know what it exactly looks like, so I'm just kind of wondering. I guess those are my two questions.
So Commissioner, the inside of the building generally gets a refresh in terms of finishes and so forth. The common areas are being added in the new building and are accessible to all residents. So the new building will be the primary area for, there's a new community room, community room kitchen. Offices, Common Bond has services that are provided to residents, advantaged services. The office for that is in the new building. Residents can either go through the lower level to get into the new building directly or go outside and back in. So the management office, the services office are in the new building. And then there are some existing spaces that are pretty deficient in the existing building, primarily, for instance, the office, and that's being switched over. The mail-type spaces, property management-type spaces are being in both buildings. There are some things in terms of renovation of the existing building. Some windows are being replaced, life safety systems are being added and upgraded. And then it's the resurfacing of the parking lot that you don't like. But on the backside, complete renewal of all the play structures and common area amenities in the outside.
So I guess to answer the other question, do you see another way to comply or at least get closer to the number that would be acceptable?
I'd say no. The reason I'd say that is the existing building in no way complies ever. It would always have to get a modification to exist, to continue to exist. And that would be regardless of whether or not we separated the existing parcel into two lots. The other thing is, we tried to focus on the issue of we are way under the allowable floor area for the site. So it's kind of unusual to be, on the one point, non-conforming for the square footage of the buildings themselves, but conforming well below the allowable floor area provisions of the code. So that goes back to the point of we've just got too big of a lot, frankly, and too big of an existing building to conform with the overlay zoning. So I think that's what makes this unusual. On that, if it was a standalone building, we could probably come up with a uniquely configured lot to put the new building on because of the site area. We could take a whole lot of site area away from the school, but the school would nonetheless always have to be either non-conforming to remain.
Okay, thank you.
All right, up next is Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. A couple of comments and I have done a question. Regarding the gross floor area and the desire to break it up, break up the look of it in the neighborhood, I was just today exploring Pillsbury Avenue a few blocks north of here and the wonderful historic homes. And you keep wandering down further south and then about, I don't know, 25th maybe, you encounter two-thirds of a block long, two and a half story and three and a half story buildings that are so depressing. So I understand the thought behind the regulation. However, I think in this case, the design is such that, you know, it's not a continuation of Whittier School. I remember when Whittier School was made into, or this school was made into a co-op. We were also thrilled it was being used in that way. But I don't think this addition, you know, makes it any more oppressive or too much of an overbearing structure. So I think what's being proposed here, the fact that it is distinctive, is a good way of dealing with that issue. I also think the parking lot that you are removing is really pretty grim. Now, I drive by here fairly often and that parking lot is, at best, a bunch of asphalt with weeds growing up through it, valiant weeds. So I think this is a good use of that property. I am curious as to whether or not you can do anything to improve the look along 26th Street where the parking does stay. But my question, if it relates to the landscaping, I'm looking at the picture here and there's lots of pretty trees and grass. And unfortunately, over the years, I've seen lots of drawings like this where the landscaping looks good on the drawing and then several years later, they've died or the grass is brown. So I'm wondering what is being done with the design or the maintenance or the management to ensure that we really do have trees like this in the next 20 years?
I'll try to respond, I'm sorry, our landscape architect could not make it tonight to respond to this. But the issue of creating that new courtyard and focused landscape around that, we've noted that we would be seeking some of the points for, related to the alternatives for enhanced landscape. And to the degree that we can incorporate low-maintenance turf, we will be doing that as well. As to the operations side, Leah, do you want to address that question?
Yeah, I mean, I think Common Bond typically for landscaping does hire out services, so we have lawn care folks that come by to So we have lawn care folks that come by to cut and maintain the grass as well as the landscaping annually. You know, I think as far as, you know, trees dying out and stuff like that, we do have warranties with the contractor. So if they plant a tree and it dies within the first year that we install it, they are actually required to come back out and replace that tree. You know, I think if a building is there for 20 years, I hope that we maintain it over time, but, you know, things do age, and that's why we do like to do rehabs like this and upgrade the landscaping and add to it and try to enhance it. So that's my base.
But, thank you. But I'm curious, and I'm not a landscape architect at all by any means, but I mean, are there things that could be, could be done in designing that results in, you know, the water not draining away or not, or not draining to it, whatever it is that kills off these trees routinely? It would be nice to see some effort at applying the landscape architect skills to ensure that they live for a few, beyond one year.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll bring that back to Nikki. And also, you know, one thing that happens often as a part of a project like this, the whole having a, the trees pruned and focused on what is there now, and the species of the new select, new, new material be intentionally selected for healthy stock. So if I could just return back to the north parking lot for a second. So one thing that was brought up by staff was the question about whether we can look at removing this curb cut and turning it into the alley. And so we are, we are looking into that in terms of clearances and what else happens here, but that's certainly something that we're looking at. It might help block the view into the parking lot and help, might diminish a little bit of the parking presence as you drive west on 26th to have the curb, have that entrance to the parking place on the east side off the alley rather than directly off of 26th.
Commissioner Ford, did that, did you have anything else or was that all you had?
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you very much.
All right. Just didn't want to touch you.
Keep those two alive.
Okay. Up next is Commissioner Baxley.
Thank you. I am curious, Kim, as you studied this, you know, about where this addition goes. I mean, I think you've done a wonderful job of articulating the scale and sort of pulling things back and really integrating the structure. What I worry about is the resulting spaces which are essentially on the north side of the building. There's sort of deep pockets, our entrances northwest, which, you know, is gonna, that's all our prevalings, you know, you're gonna catch a lot of snow and stuff right at the So did you guys study, kind of seeing if you could get the counts and things on 26th and so you could, you know, keep a beautiful south-facing open space where the parking lot is? I'm just, I'm just wondering on process here a little bit and how you landed at, at this being the best spot to do the addition.
Sure. So we had looked at a rectangular building on this. We never did look at it here, but I'd say if, if I'm reconstructing the thought process, the challenges with putting a straight rectangular building at this scale would not get us the 40 units and the challenge of getting access to the lower level for this ramp, we could do that in this area. So the challenge in terms of the, this square footage of a building, most developers would ask us, please make it a rectangle. And it would be a rectangle if we had it on the north end of the site. And the, the challenge in this case is, I don't think, based on what, what we had for a rectangle or when we had done it, we had to have four to five stories tall on the south end of the lot to fit it in a rectangle. And where we were a year ago was that we could not get a variance. There's no provision to go to a four or five story building in this overlay district. It was a non-starter.
Yeah.
And so we had to create a bigger footprint building and go to three stories to build this program. And so you could put a rectangle on north, it would not get to 40 minutes. And in terms of the square footage of the footprint, and to get to one-to-one parking underneath it, we've taken out every inch we can. So in terms of, it's a, in spite of it being an inefficient kind of F-shaped building, it's a terribly efficient building. So it is as small as we can make it. I'm confident. And when we, when we do that, you see how much outside wall area. There are costs to doing that.
Mm-hmm.
And so the, the issue of, of getting to three stories, we've created a lot of outside wall area in order to do the articulation that tries to get to the issue of the scale of the buildings that are desired. So we've tried to break the building up into subsets of buildings, and we could not do that on the north side.
Yeah, I can, and again, I, I think the, the articulation of what you've done is really respectful of both the neighborhood and the adjoining building. So I think it's great. I just, you know, sometimes when we do that, we sort of step back and go, all right, so we're gonna have to really kind of amp up our maintenance in those areas, make sure they're lit well. I think the daylighting will be terrific for all those units. I think that's, that's wonderful. Did you, sort of to put that to bed lastly, and the idea, because I think, because given all that perimeter area, if you had a simple rectangle and potentially even another little chunk of that to get to your counts here on the south, you know, we're already sort of way past our perimeter floor ratios. You've kind of blown those already. I wonder if, if you guys had looked, again, you've, this was before our time on the commission, so forgive me for digging back a bit, but I wondered if you looked at that at all or was that, that idea of sort of two additions being, that's really gonna push our budget way past where we need it to be?
We didn't consider two additions. So the, you know, partly, the question before us a year ago was, was, do we do a five-story or a four-story on the south side with a smaller footprint? And at that, we had to get through the planning cycle, the approval process prior to the end of the year.
Yep.
And the decision was, no, we aren't gonna do that. That's not realistic. Let's, let's work with and anticipate the overlay, which was in, you know, early draft form but not yet finalized. And so we thought that the most critical decision is, can we, what can we do with a three-story building?
Yeah.
Can it fit? And for our purposes, it can fit, but clearly it does require the compromise or the ask related to CUP.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the more than three stories is not an ask. That's, we understand that should not be possible to ask.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, again, and so thanks for entertaining my questions there. I'll reiterate again, I think you have been very skillful in sort of articulating this in such a way that I think the units will be well lit. It just, I think focusing as to Commissioner Ford also, the sort of health of those trees and making sure, you know, doors are sheltered in such a way that, you know, that northwest conditions are just challenging, you know that, it's, it's tough. And last question, the connector, is that, I would imagine, you know, there are some advantages to walking through, maybe some advantages also to kind of be able to cordon off both areas. Is the, is the lid of that thing going to be planted or is it just a bare roof? What are you thinking for that?
So we, we looked at a few things. One was to mound it and have a path over the top of it. There was some conversation about that, but the preference was to not bury it, partly for ongoing maintenance issues.
Yeah.
And partly for security reasons, to make it a barrier so you can't go through it so that residents can get access to the backspace. It can control kid play areas in a secure manner because there is fencing on, on the east side of the site, but to, to cut it off from a, from a shortcut through the city, partly from a security issue. And so the roof of that, right now, it is a flat roof and the, on the elevations, so this, that is what you'll see.
Yep.
Of that link, because the roof of it is roughly equal to the floor line.
Right.
And what we've talked about including was a fence at, at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We've got a comment from staff.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments that some commissioners had on the parking lot on 26th. Just to note that, you know, that, that existing parking lot doesn't meet our current landscaping and screening standards. And so when this project goes through site plan review, that does cover the entire site. And so alternative compliance to the landscaping and screening standards for that parking lot would be needed for the existing condition. We almost always support alternative compliance for existing parking areas that are not changing when compliance would require losing parking spaces. So in the, typically, staff would be supportive of alternative compliance to allow that parking lot to remain generally as it is with, you know, what minor landscaping and screening improvements can be made. That being said, if commissioners have feedback on that parking lot and have specific requests that they'd like to discuss with the applicant team for potential improvements there, that is certainly something that is captured by site plan review. And if commissioners have a strong desire to see more improvements to that parking lot, that's something that we can talk about for sure.
Thank you. Next is Commissioner Marwa.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank the applicant team. This is such an interesting project, and I for one really like not seeing it just another rectangle. So I actually think the F shape is really cool and something new or neat to see. I also really like your landscaping plan and the way that you've really made this kind of look like a campus for the families who'll live there with a lot of holistic elements from the playground to the gardening boxes. I really commend you. You've seen a lot of projects that don't fit this bill, so I really thank you for going the extra step. I will say, I did notice that you get one point for decorative fencing, and I saw from the fencing that you presented, it looks kind of like just a wooden slatted fence. So I just wanted to understand what was kind of the decorative part of that. And, and my, I mean, my suggestion kind of obviously is always to add more creative elements that you can. I love how green this parcel looks and how much greenery you've added, you know, if you can maybe live plants on the trellis or even like trellis up some plants on those fences. I mean, at this point, I will even take fake greenery on fences just for added interest in the city from seeing ugly chain link fences and, you know, just boring fences. I, you know, I will take fake plants, but just, I think there's some, some room for some cool improvement that you all can do there on both internal and external on the fences. And then maybe something like that can also be from that parking lot side, can kind of carry through that green theme. Again, I really like that you guys have added so much greenery and, and thank you for that. Question quick for staff. I noticed that on the list of amenities and the points, there wasn't one for the garden boxes, for the plantings, for like the, and I thought when we had talked about the built form, everything that we had talked about, like if you're adding food boxes, boxes where you can be growing fresh food, that was an additional point. So that is one of the point of clarification on that one.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Marwa. I'm gonna pull that up here right now. I believe that that is an amenity point that is outlined, but let me pull that up here real quick.
In the meantime, if the, if the applicant team wants to talk to, about the fences?
I agree with your comment about that alley fencing that does not look best. We will certainly pursue a better appearing fence. The, there is existing rod iron that faces 26th or metal fencing between brick piers. There is some chain link that exists currently along the alley side near 26th. And my, I believe what is more consistent with what we want to do would be the metal fencing, not chain link and not wood. So we'll, we'll pursue the ornamental, more intention with the metal type fencing and make sure we can incorporate that.
Okay. And that'll be also the side where the playground is as well?
Yes, yes. That's, the playground area is the east side along the alley. So we'll, we'll look at that.
Thank you. And I think Andrew.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Marwa. Yeah, so I did pull that up here, and you are correct. There is a, a section of amenities for onsite food production, and that's worth five points. That standard is, it's a pretty high standard that's required there. That's 60 square feet per dwelling unit, up to a maximum of 5,000 square feet. Also has to provide watering systems, secure storage for tools, and a few other items here. So I think the, the garden space that they're proposing would not meet that standard. They certainly could propose under the section that allows the planning commission to consider other amenities proposed by the applicant, a similar system. So if they are proposing a, a smaller gardening area for residents, they could propose that for consideration for a lower number of points that the commission could choose to grant.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would say I'm thankful that you guys are including some of that type of space as much as you can incorporate. I think especially, I live in multifamily housing and I wish that we had more of that type of stuff, that we could all kind of be planting our own fruits and veggies if we don't get the best sunlight too. So thanks.
If, if I could add to that, in general, on the amenity points, we've got, we've noted more than we have to have, and part of that is to the issues of the specific definitions such as the one that staff just clarified. We knew we could not get to that much, partly because the current residents have some spaces and we're trying to keep along that level because of the number of people who are currently gardening there and that that seems to be the right amount. And so, but also just simply to comply fully for the points, we, it would be very hard to, to create that much along Blaisdell. So we were intentional about having some, but not to the level that the points were. And in general, on the amenity points, for instance, we didn't originally propose gaining the points for enclosed parking because technically it's not all enclosed. And so staff has indicated that we could seek half the points for enclosed because we are providing half the parking, in essence, in enclosed areas. So we'll fine tune those amenity points based on clearly having to have 20, but as we look at the specific definitions of each one, finalizing on the ones that are actually appropriate.
Just a quick point of clarification, but the garden boxes will be for the new residents as well as the existing ones, not just existing.
Yes. It's, it's one area that can serve all of the residents. And there would be a storage area, for instance, that's in a bench that, that takes care of shovels and hoses and things like that, that would be in that area. It's not a separate structure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McGuire, go ahead.
So I apologize if this was in the report. I didn't think I saw it, but it looked like the new building had like smart pack air conditioning units or some sort of like flush wall-mounted air conditioning units for the new residents. Is that the case?
So we've designed it using magic packs, but Bill, do you want to comment on the specific nature? specific nature of those? We, we have, so in general, this building has to comply with Minnesota Green Communities Design Criteria for Sustainable Design. And so the envelope, the windows, the HVAC systems for the new building are at a certain performance level, and we haven't claimed those points, because again, we are not able to do that on the existing building. So it's an example of where we're complying on the energy performance side in excess of the code requirements for the new building. But the existing building, we cannot do that. So therefore, we haven't claimed any of those amenity points on that. But Bill, for the specifics of those air handlers, can you address them?
Yeah, the, the magic pack unit, basically that's sized for the units, they meet the energy code requirements. And they're pretty commonly used on affordable, multi-unit housing in the area. So they're a good compromise to meet, meet the budget requirements as well as the performance within the units.
Is there an opportunity to put those on the existing units? I see time and time again during the summer, our mutual aid requests and requests for window units. And I know the, you know, the old school window air conditioning is just aren't energy efficient and end up costing residents a lot of money. So as we're looking for solutions with climate change as well, is there just, is there a way to keep the existing residents in mind and have something for them as well?
So the, the challenge on, on old buildings or historic buildings is incorporating of a system, it, you can't, you can do fan coil units. For instance, over renovating Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, high rises at Elliott Park, where it was 1960 building that had always had in-window air conditioners. And because it's a high-rise there, we replaced the entire system with vertical fan coil system, so that air is supplied to the units and air conditioning is, is provided without having magic pack type. That budget does not work for this project in the renovation of the school. It would require a complete replacement, and the budget for that just isn't there on this, this rehab.
And I believe there's some rooftop equipment, some kind of larger rooftop equipment that needs to be installed for that system to work too, so.
So existing residents will continue to need to buy their own window units. Correct?
They need window air units, but Leah, do they buy, do they have to provide those? Or are they, sometimes, property management can obtain them. So I'm, I'm not sure how that works with this property.
Yeah, honestly, I'd have to do research to tell you. It does vary building to building. Typically, if, if they're already buying them, we don't usually, you know, change over and say, we'll buy them for you. One of the things that we have done in our rehabs is if we have contingency left over at the end of the project that we have not spent, is we will go through and say, you know, are there any old units that we can replace? And then we will go through and, and replace them for residents. I can definitely look that up and send an email to staff if that's something that you want to know for sure.
Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Smiley.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Olson. I had a quick question, actually about the rooftop. You just mentioned it with some, some structural functionality that will use the rooftop, but I'm also wondering if there's any other use for the rooftop that you could be picturing, because it is quite a bit of a footprint. And I'm just kind of wondering if you have considered, for example, solar panels or any rooftop amenity van, because it seems like it would be a space that would otherwise be a bit wasted. Yeah, so I'm just kind of wondering if you have any plans for that.
Commissioner, so we can make the rooftop solar ready, and so that there are, there's the appropriate loads that could take the future photovoltaics and conduit path for that. So that we, that can certainly be provided. For rooftop amenity spaces, the challenge is, it also requires stair and elevator extensions to the roof if the roof is meant for public use. So we are not providing or anticipating having a usable roof in either the existing or other rehab.
Thank you. And I guess I just have a follow-up comment for staff, if that's okay, because staff asked a question about how we would potentially see the enhancement for the parking, surface parking. And ideally, I would have liked that space to be activated one way or another, so that it's not, because it's right off of a pretty active corridor. But I guess in the absence of any kind of storefront or amenities that the pedestrians can, can, you know, integrate with, I would say at least additional landscaping in that area. And I do see like a, like about four, what it looks like, at least in this, in this plan, that seem to be canopy trees, I think. But if it could have additional landscaping such as shrubs and/or anything that would look a little like a visual barrier, if you will, to the asphalt surface, I think would be very helpful.
All right. Oh, Commissioner Meyer, did you want to say that you're in the meeting or ask any questions?
Yep. I just want to note my presence for the record. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. I'm not seeing any more questions. So have we answered your questions, Andrew?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate all the, all the feedback. It's very helpful. I, I think I gathered from the back and forth that it, it seems like the commission as a whole seems to, to feel positively about the alternative compliance request for the gross floor area, given the layout of the site, its size, the articulation of the building, and kind of the, the size of the existing building. At least that's sort of what I, what I gathered from that, and I appreciate that. And thank you all for your comments.
All right. Well, thank you, Andrew, and thank you to the development team.
Thank you.
All right. Kimberly, do you have any updates for us? Maybe Kimberly is not on this evening. All right. Commissioners, any other matters to discuss before we adjourn? All right. And then I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the, oh, Commissioner Marwa, go ahead.
Hi, guys. I had a quick question. So I know you all, probably all figured out that I very much, oh, sorry, this is not for the applicant team. It was just for an internal conversation. Thank you. So I was talking to, we work, I work at Arts-Based, and we work really closely with the people at Forecast a lot. And the last meeting really were that building that we were talking about, kind of wanting to add visual elements and what are kind of low-cost ways. We, like, they have like a whole list of parts and developments that like artists can engage in for, you know, ranging costs from everything, from building the decorative fences, to building the bike racks, to stamping sidewalks, to painting the sidewalks, to murals, to all of this. I kind of just want to understand, to garden trellises, you know, all of these elements that I think can enhance our visual landscape here so much, and especially when we're seeing such these cut and paste boxes. Kind of understand, is that something that like can give to the city that when they're working through the processes, or is that can present to them? I just feel like there's a big disconnect about when we see these projects and we can, you know, consistently give them this feedback, where are they not seeing it before that? So I don't know who this question is really for.
I do not, I'm not sure what the answer is. I, I'm not sure if Kimberly is on tonight. But maybe that's a question we could have with staff sometime about, you know, sharing those things in advance. Or you can always just be the advocate, like you are.
Yeah, I don't want to keep annoying you guys, but it's, I mean, there's so much that, there's so much creativity happening that people, that can be engaged in these projects, from students to, you know, visual storytelling. There's so many things that can be added, and I'm not sure exactly how that process can help and work.
Yeah. I guess I would say we'd have to ask staff. I don't know the answer. But we can certainly do that.
I see a comment from Commissioner Sweets. Maybe you have answers, being on the commission the longest?
Well, it's, it's an interesting question. I think that kind of information probably needs to be exchanged outside the purview of these meetings. You know, by the time we see something at Committee of the Whole or at our main commission, commission, it's, you know, the team is in place and all of that. And I would be concerned about advocating for one particular group in this forum. So I, I don't think, I don't think we can do that. That's not our job, is to suggest places to go, you know, particular places to go. So my recommendation, you know, really to Commissioner Marwa would be, I, I would either, I would talk offline, actually, to somebody from CPED about that. It sounds like the issue is making sure developers and project managers know that that's available, right? Which seems to me, I don't want to use the word marketing per se, but to make those kind of connections between other organizations, I think it's a great idea. I'm just not sure this is the forum for it.
Yeah, exactly. I'm trying to figure out where, where might be, because I feel like...
I would, I would go back to the staff at CPED personally and see where they think that place to connect would be. That would be my two cents on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sweets. Commissioner Smiley?
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, kind of piggyback on Commissioner Sweets' comment, which I think is, I, I agree in terms of kind of like advocating for a specific group, even if they do the best job in the field and in this area. But I was gonna follow up in this, in the sense that there is a person in CPED, in long-range planning, whose job is just public art. So I think that person, I forgot her name, I was trying to look it up. And I, I think that that would be a great place to start. And I wonder if there was a way to, Mary Altman, thank you. There was a way to, like, use her as a resource in that way, and, or communicate with her in advance, but then use her as a resource in the review of some of these proposals, potentially to get some of that feedback internally and while the, while staff is still working with the development team, basically. So I guess, yeah, that's all.
Well, I, I know Mary, but her purview is very much public. It's public art.
Yeah, yeah.
Public approvals of what's kind of being proposed as public art. As far as like, can we get, you know, just better looking facades and more interesting kind of material, like, not just materials, but fence, like, the small things that go into developments that could be creative elements. I think you're, I think it's, is just, I can, I'll connect with Kimberly and maybe see if she has, who, like, who in that staff review period could help be an advocate from that side. Because it does feel like they're very fully baked by the time they come to us. And, but it does feel like we're getting a lot of cut and paste projects. So.
I think if you have, and if you find a way in doing that, I would personally appreciate it. Because I know that the way that our ordinances and codes work right now, there is not a lot of leeway for commenting on design and saying, you know what, this building just looks ugly, and I don't want it. I don't want to look at this for 50 years. And we just can't do that, because they comply with every, like, all the codes and ordinances. So maybe the staff is considering any kind of form-based codes that will potentially address that, that can come forward in the future or something along those lines. But if, if you do find that way, I would truly appreciate it. I'm rooting for you.
That's a positive point. That's like added creativity to your project, you know? There's, there's so many examples right now of people doing this, and I just don't see it that much here. So, you know, those are my two cents. But thank you, guys, as workshopping these ideas as we go.
All right. Anything else? All right. I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, April 29th, 2021, and our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, April 26th, 2021. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.